Speak to us through his word today, let us praise God.
Kattar Dhametam ne vaathin mulamaga no moru pesum, badiyai kattara isthotaram ennoom.
Isthotaram, 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 isthotaram. During the youth meeting that took place on 25th December.
Iravitha indham nadiyadhi nanandana, andha vaalipar kutathil.
And also during the day before yesterday's all-night prayer.
Um, mantram, um, veli kaminanagana, mudhu iruvachabathilum.
And also in a personal conversation with me.
Adheen erathil, ennora tanipattadaan vidathil, annan sambashneen mulamaga.
Pastor Manasseh said that we are not in our place.
Pastor Manasseh oru sala, naam, nammadiya sthaanathil naam illai.
If we can come back to our place, we can do great things.
Naam, nammadiya sthaanathil naam arumbodhi, naam, megavum periyakaranle naam sayilam.
That word touched me.
Andha vaathianadu, enna megavum thottadu.
And out of that word, this message that I'm going to present to you has been born.
Andha vaathin mulamaga, naan, ippo devangalaka prasangika pogadana, indha seidi aanadu perakkadu.
When God asked Abraham to go and sacrifice Isaac.
Kattaraagi devan abharama pesi, sanne maganagi, isaake balikodu kumriyaa, varu solumbodhi.
Sacrifice him on one of the mountains that I shall tell thee of.
Nee unare kumarne, naan unuke solukkadan, oru malaiyil, unare maganayi, nee bali seltavendam solugiraa.
He is going to a mountain range, there are many mountains there, on one of those peaks, he'll have to sacrifice Isaac.
Ah, andha malai, um, anegamalaiyil undhi, andha malaiyil, oru sigarathil, indha isaake balirevendam solugiraa.
Now it's very important that Abraham find the right mountain.
Adhal, ippo, abharam, andha mukkiam, andha sariyanandha sigaratthi thirundadukumriyaa, andha pagudil erkraa.
If he doesn't find that place.
Andha pagudhi, andhadathai, varu thirundukala vittaal.
If he goes to the wrong mountain.
Varu thavarana edathuka selvaadhaan tral.
There won't be an angel on top of the wrong mountain to tell Abraham, "Stop!"
Um, kattar, tuthananavat, andha thavarana malaiyil irundhi, nee niruthi endu salaamal erpaar.
Andha tuthanangirukkamattam.
Andha tuthanangirukkamattam.
And there won't be any ram caught on the thickets on the wrong mountain to replace that sacrifice.
Adheevaleel, andha oru kadaaanadu, andha mutkalil sikkikulada, adabridhi, andha kadavum angirukkada.
So he has to be on the right place.
Adhal, varu sariyanedathil selavendum.
The same way, we have gone astray as a church, as individuals, and we need to come back to the right place once again.
Adheen, adheen pola, naamum, varitavripai, nammadiya sabaiyaga, tanipattu jeevithilum, naam, varitavrisendurukrom, naam thirumum, oru sariyanedathukana varavendum.
If you don't realize what I'm saying, it means you are spiritually blind.
Naan solvade, ningal unaramal irupirivendra, ningal avikrapparagaramaga, kurudara irukkriirgal.
Again, I'm telling you collectively and individually, we're all in the wrong place.
Marubidim naan solugan, podu bagavum, naam, tanipattu vidathilum, naam, oru thavarana edathil erukrom.
Let's read from Zechariah chapter 12 and read verse 6.
Sagariyavin pristugam panirindham adigaram, aaram asanathai vasipom.
Annalile yudhaavin thalevarai viragallakkulli, erigira akkini adupukum, vaikol kattugallakkulli, erigira teevatikkum opakveen. Avarkal varathapuramum idathapuramaga purappattu, suttilum irukkara ellajananagali patti paarakal, erusalem thirumum, tanstanamagaya erusalemile kudi etta pathirukum.
In that day will I make the governors of Tudah like an earth of fire among the wood, and like a torch of fire in a sheaf, and they shall devour all the people round about, on the right and on the left, and Jerusalem shall be inhabited again in her own place, even in Jerusalem.
Although I've read the Bible more than ten times, I never knew these words till I came across it by accident a couple of days ago.
Vedagamathin, naan, patthum muraike meelaaga padithirundhalum, indha kuripitta vasanathai, oru tarchailaga, naan, kandukolumarekku, mintha vasanathai ariyadundene.
I don't even know if Pastor Manasseh knows if there's a verse like this.
I, um, pastor Manasseh, kum, ippribadhaan vasanam irukkundu, terima, enneke, enneke teriyavellai?
So it's so apt that God brings all this together to form a message.
Adhal, ippribadhaan vasanungal allam, kattar, orumugumaaguka konduverukiraa.
So Jerusalem shall be inhabited again in her own place, namely Jerusalem.
Erusalem thirumum, tanstanamagaya erusalemile kudi etta pathirukum.
So this verse says, "At present Jerusalem is not in its place."
Indha vasanam solugadu, thappodu erusalem, adhur kethaadana, andhadathil illai.
The meaning of this verse is, "I will bring back the people Jerusalem to the place Jerusalem."
Indha vasanathin poruladu, erusalem irukkadaana, andha janangalai, naan, marubidimaga thirumbavapandaveen.
Now although this piece of scripture has been mentioned more than 2,000 years ago.
Um, indha vedagamithin, indha vasanathin pagudhi, 2,000 vashthiku munbaga solappattirundhalum.
This is a prophetic utterance, very specific to our time.
Idhu, idhu, oru thirkaadashna vaathaya irukkada, mukkiamaga, nammadiya indha kaala kattathil venduadana, oru thirkaadashna maarukkada.
If you read verses 2 and 3.
Renda, mundaamasanathen vasikumbodhi.
It is written about Jerusalem becoming a cup of trembling to all the surrounding nations.
Erusalem, adhur, kalangigradana, oru pathramaga irukkundu, naan vasikrum.
Tattalipin pathram.
Tattalipin pathramaga irukkundu, naan vasikrum.
That means because of Jerusalem, the whole world is going to start trembling.
Enndhal, erusalemni nimittamaga, sagala ulagam mudhuvadum, adhur tattalipke pogadu.
This is a prophecy about the last days, when, on the brink of a world war, World War III.
Indha thirkaadashna maanadu, indha kadaisikaala thirkaadashna maarukkada, mundaam, maga, ulagam magaitathukkadaana, andha nerukkathil irukkadaana, indha thirkaadashna maarukkada.
What is written in those verses is happening right now in the world before our eyes.
Indha vasanathil eydappattuadana, indha karimanaadu, nammadiya kangelkum munbaga, ippothi nanandukondurukkada.
So verse 6 is a continuation of that.
Andha aaramasannanum, andha rundaamundam asanathin todachiaga irukkada.
So it is applicable to the literal Jerusalem in Israel today, and much more applicable to the church Jerusalem, that is you and me.
Indha vasanam aanadu, elthu pragaramaga, irukkadaana, erusalemakkum, adhurka meelaaga, avikrappaya erusalamaga irukkaro ungalakkum, enakkum, adhu megavum portama irukkada.
Now who is mentioning these verses?
Indha vaathigal yaar solugiraa?
Who is uttering this prophecy?
Indha thirkaadashna thayar orakiraa?
Who is behind Zechariah uttering these words?
Sagariyavke pinbaga irundhi, yaarindha vaathigale orakiraa?
Read verse 1.
Madalamasanathai vasipom.
Israveli kurithu, kattar sallina vaathain bhaaram, vaanangali virithu, bhoomi astibara paduthi, manushanudayaavi, avanakkul undakkugara, kattar solugadu ennavendraal?
The burden of the world, word of the Lord for Israel, saved the Lord, which stretched forth the heavens, and laid the foundation of the earth, and formed the spirit of man within him.
Here it is, you know, the word burden comes often in the book of Isaiah, you read of it, the burden of Tyah, the burden of Damascus, here it is the burden for Israel, the burden of the word of the Lord.
Indha bhaaram indhaadana vaathai, vedagamtha, anegarathil eldappadukku, eldappattirukkada, thirum in bhaaram, damasku in bhaaram, ippripala bhaaram indhaadana vaathai, anegadarum eldappattirukkada.
What is that burden?
Andha bhaaram enna?
A burden means a weighty prophecy, a heavy prophecy.
Bhaaram endu solumbodhi, adhu megavum bhaaram, oru bhaaramaga irukkadaana, oru thirkaadashna.
That means those who are going to hear the prophecy, their hearts will become heavy.
Adhanam, artam, indha bhaaramanandha thirkaadashna thay kettiravagal, adhu unandukalvargal.
Avdi irudheyum bhaaramagividum.
Avagali irudheyum bhaaramagividum.
They'll become scared, they'll become sad, they'll start worrying, their hearts will become heavy.
Avagali bayandhi, avagali bharappattu, avagali irudheyum, avagali bharappattu irukkum.
So this is a burden for Israel, that means it is supporting Israel, and it's going to become a burden for all the other nations.
Indha bhaaram aanadu, isravel janangalikurithu daarkada, isravel janangalikoru sadhanga arkada, adhee bhaaram, mattravulukum selvamendu solugadu.
Adhu mattravulukku bhaarama marapogadu.
Mattra, indha bhaaram aanadu, mattravulukku oru bhaaramaga marapogadu.
Three things are mentioned about this God who's delivering this prophecy.
Indha kattari kurithu, muddrukarangal, bharaththi virikumriyaa, andha kattari patti solukkada.
One, he that stretches forth the heavens.
Madalavadu, vaanangalai virithu.
In Tamil, vaanangali virithu, in English, vaanangali virikkiravat, he that stretches forth, in present tense it's written.
Um, um, angal, um, Tamil, vaanangali virithu endu salaapadukku, angalathil, vaanangali virikkiravat endu salaapattirukkada.
Science is trying to propose a theory that the universe is expanding, which is very true.
Um, um, anvil aanadu, indha, um, andha sarasaranam, virivagapogadu endu salaapattirukka.
Even today, the whole is, the whole universe is expanding from a center point.
Indraykum, indha andha sarasaranam, oru, oru, mattiyapulli ilarundhi, adhu virivagadu endu salaapattirukkada.
At great speed, thousands of kilometers per hour, this universe is expanding, every second it's expanding.
Megavum, adhimana vegaathil, ayyaram kilometer, manikka ayyarm kilometer vegaathil, indha andha sarasaranam, virivagadu endu salaapattirukka.
So the scientists are saying, doing reverse calculation, so once upon a time, all these heavenly bodies would have been in a center, one ball, and that would have exploded, that's why it's happening like this, that's called the Big Bang Theory.
Indha, marubidimagaadana, indha kolgin mulamaga, indha andha sarasaranam, um, andha Big Bang Theory, indhaadana, andha karim mulamaga, marubidimaa, adhu thirumbavapugadu endu solugirargal.
Illa, oru kaala thil, idhu, virivadendukondurukkada, oru kaala thil, adhu oray edathil, oru mayathil irundhi, vedithirukkum, endru, avagali yuhikiragal. But the Bible says, it did not happen that way, God stretched forth the heavens, that means it was all with him, "Let there be," he said, and spread his hands, and everything started expanding.
Anal vedagam apri solavellai, devanage kattar, unthaga kadavadu endu solumbodhi, adhalirundhi, adhu parambi, adhu virivanadu.
The beauty is, it's written, "He stretched forth the heavens," which means even now it's expanding, which is very true.
Adhu aragana karim enduendra, adhu virivagakondurukkada, adhu artam, adhu innam virivagakondiye irukkada.
Uh, this first part of this verse is trying to tell us how great this God is.
Indha vasanathin mudal pagudhi aanadu, nammadiya devan, epvula periyavat endu solugadu.
You know how many stars there are in the, in the universe?
Um, andha vaanam, andha, andha vaanathil, epvula nachitrangal undendu, ungalakutterima?
I don't know if I'm accurate, but I'm going to give you a rough estimate.
Anadhi thulliyamaga, naan solukamriyaa, anal, oru, oru, oru averageaga, naan adhi solugirain.
So many, so many stars there are in the universe.
Ehdappattikadana, andha kanakkenbadi, andha ennangalendu, epvula nachitrangal undu.
Now this God stretched out all these stars.
Indha devan, indha nachitrangal, ellavatthi marveritaa.
There are, you know, I was listening to a sermon where a man was trying to describe how big God is by showing how big the stars are.
Oru, ennu, manushan, kattaraagi devan, epvula periyavat endru, solugadana, andha prasangathai, naan kettukundunendu.
The sun that we see in the sky is a very small star.
Naam vaanathil parkadana, indha surian aanadu, adhu megavum, oru siriyavu nachitrarma irukkada.
It looks big because it's near.
Adhu, um, namkum, megavum, arugamail irukkabidinaa, adhu peridaga thondukada.
How near is the sun?
Andha surian namkay, epvula megavum, arugamay irukkada.
It is 9.3 lakhs kilometers away.
93 laksh.
Sorry, 930 lakhs kilometers away.
93 laksham kilometers dourithal irukkada.
Our earth is so big.
Nammadiya bhoomiyam, megaperida irukkada.
But you can put 96,000 earths into the sun, the sun is so big.
Anal, um, indha, um, indha bhoomiyay, 96,000 bhoomiyay, indha surianukal, naam, puguthivendam, epvula peridana surian.
But there are stars which are very, very big.
Anal, adhay kaathilum, megaperidana nachitrangalum undu.
There's a star, you know how big it is?
Oru nachitrungal undu, ungalakadhu, epvula peridu endu terima?
Suppose you have a ball that is as big as the head of this microphone.
Um, odhanamaga, oru balla edhutukolga, indha micillarkadaana, andha orundai samamaga, irukkamendu edhutukolalaam.
How many balls like this can you use to fill this hall?
Yeah, indha haale nerpumbadiyaga, ethanai, indha pandugal namkutthayipadum?
Let's assume that this ball represents our planet earth.
Naam, indha, indha, um, pandaynaam, indha bhoomikku, oppanayaga, naam edhutukolalaam.
So, uh, you take a ball this size.
Indha alavakirukkadaana, indha naam, pandey edhutu.
A table tennis ball.
Indha table tennis, andha, andha balla, naam edhutu.
And if you fill all of Chennai with those balls, how many balls can you use?
Indha ballin mulamaga, indha Chennai pathinu mududu maga, nerpam enduendra, epvula ball namkutthayipadum?
If you fill all of Tamil Nadu with this ball, with these balls, how many can you fill?
Indha alavillirukkadaana, indha balla kundu, indha Tamil Nadu mududu, nerpam enduendra, namkutthanai ball thayipadum?
If you can fill Tamil Nadu, and Kerala, and Karnataka, and Andhra with these balls, how many can you fill?
Indha Tamil Nadu, Kerala, Andhra, Karnataka, and ellaj, andha maningalum, nerpam enduendra, ethanai ball namkutthayipadum?
Just imagine, lakhs and lakhs and lakhs of balls you will need.
Naam, adhi sindhitupada, lakshyakanakana pandugal namkutthayipadum?
Now, don't just fill the land with those balls, do, fill Tamil Nadu, Andhra, Kerala, Karnataka, ground level with all those balls, and also heap up these balls up to 20 feet, how many balls will you need?
Indha nilap, andha pandin mulamaga, andha Tamil Nadu, Andhra, Kerala, Karnataka, andha, andha maningal, nilapparapalavil maathram, naam, nerpamamal, adhu 20 adi, ala, oyarathukka, naam, nerpavendamendra, ethanai ball namkutthayipadum?
Just imagine, Andhra, Tamil Nadu, Karnataka, Kerala, all filled with balls, 20 foot height.
Um, idhu sindhitupadugal, Tamil Nadu, Andhra, Karnataka, Kerala, indha ellam maningalum, 20 adi oyarathirkku, indha pandugalal nerpapadukundu.
Small balls.
Indha, indha siriyavu pandugal.
How many balls will you need?
Ethanai pandugal namkutthayipadum?
So many earths you can use to fill that big star that I'm talking to you about.
Indha, naan, solugadana, indha nachitrangal, epvula, epvula pandugal namkutthay, andha nachitrangal nerpumbadiyaga, ethanai pandugal, ethanai bhoomigal, adhukthayipadum?
So big stars are there in the universe.
Adhal, indha andha sarasathil, epvula megaperidana nachitrangal undu.
And our God, who is in our midst now, he's the one who stretched out the heavens.
Anal, nammadiya devan, nammadiya mattil, ippothirukkadaana devan, indha nachitrangalai, varu undakkina.
These huge fireballs are fleeing away from each other because our God has commanded it.
Akkini mananmana, indha peridana nachitrangal, namkumaga, parundukondurukkaadu, nammadiya devane, idhayllam srishtita.
So one, he has, he has, uh, he's stretching the heavens.
Madalankarim, varu, indha vaanaththi virithirukkara.
Secondly, he lays, in present tense, he lays, not laid, he lays the foundations of the earth.
Nigergalathil pragaramaga, varu, indha bhoomiyay astibara paduthukaraa.
What is the foundation of the earth?
Indha bhoomiin astibaram enna?
What, uh, building as foundation, what is the foundation of the earth?
Oru kattadurukkum, oru, um, astibaram undu, anal, bhoomiin astibaram enna?
In one sense, the foundation of the earth represents the axis of the earth, and also the orbit around which, uh, in which it goes around the sun.
Oru vidathil, indha bhoomiin astibaram endra, adhu suttrukadana, andha axis enduam salaalam.
That's, it is, it is rotating around one center called the axis.
Adhu, indha bhoomiin axis enduana, andha, oru, um, andha nadhumaiyil undhi, adhu bhoomi suttrukada.
And on another sense, it goes around the sun in an orbit, this is what it stands on, therefore, it can be called the foundation of the earth.
Adheen erathil, indha bhoomi aanadu, tanakkirukkadaana, andha orbit, adhu surianu sutti varukkada.
So he lays the foundation of the earth, what does that mean?
Adhal, bhoomiyay, varu astibara paduthukaraa endu solumbodhi, adhu nee artam endra?
The Bible says, "The earth has begun to reel to and fro."
Vedagam solugadu, indha bhoomi aanadu, indha porum, andha porum, adhu asagiru endu salaagadu.
Adhu thallada aramikthurukada.
Adhu thallada aramikkada endu salaapattirukka.
Isaiah chapter 24 and verse 20.
Esaayin pristugam 24 madigaram, 20 amasana vasipom.
Merittavanipola desam thalladhi, oru kudilai pola, payartupodapadum, adhin paadagam, adhin meel bhaarama irukkayaal, adhivundupoom, ini idundharadu.
The earth shall reel to and fro like a drunkard, and shall be removed like a cottage, and the transgression, the wrath, shall be heavy upon it, and it shall fall and not rise again.
So in Tamil, it's written, "Desam thalladukaradu," in the, in English, "The earth has begun to reel to and fro."
Tamil, adhu, "Desam thalladukaradu" endu salaapattirukka, anal, angalathal, adhu, indha bhoomi aanadu, avvaru thalladukaradu endu salaapattirukka.
Like a drunkard, it's losing its balance because its sin is heavy on it.
Adhu oru kudilai pola, payendappattu, adhu paadathan bhaarama irukkamendra, adhu virundupoom, ini idundharadu.
So the meaning is, now the foundation of the earth has started shaking.
Adhu nee artam, indha bhoomiin astibaram aanadu, adhu asaya aramikkaradu.
In the tribulation period, there is a verse which says that, you know, the earth is going to start rotating faster than now.
Indha ubathro kaala thil, oru vasanam, oru vasanam undu, adhu, indha bhoomi aanadu, adhu, um.
Ippothi suttrukka, tanne suttrukka, adhi ke vegaamai sutta pogadu.
Adhu ippothi tanne suttrukka, kaathilum, megavum vegaamaga sutta pogadu.
Some scientists are saying, there's only going to be a polar shift, that means the axis will change its position.
Indha vinyanigal, indha polar shift enduadana, andha karit, solugirargal, adhan mulamaga, indha bhoomi, adhi vegaamaga sutta pogadu.
So the foundations have started shaking.
Adhal, indha astibaramgal, asaya aramikkaradu.
But now God is holding the foundation because the church is not yet ready.
Anal, devan, indha, andha astibaratavat, nelipadukkara, enndhal, sabai aanadu, adhu thangikundurukka.
So now he's holding it only till we get raptured, and after that, the whole earth, this planet, is going to face calamity after calamity globally.
Kattaraagi devan, indha, um, andha astibaratavat, varu thangikundurukka, naam, indha, um, vargin, pirpada, indha bhoomil, peridana, oru, naasam eerpadum.
That's the second thing that we read.
Indha, indha, idhu, rendadu karit, naam, padithirukrom.
Third thing is, he formed the spirit in man.
Muddadu karim, manushanudayaavi, varu uruvaakigra.
Some people ask, when the child is found in the womb, at what part is the soul found?
Uh, seller, uh, kettiragal, kodanjana, kaduul, uruvaakumbo, indha pagudil, adhurathuma irukkamendu kettiragal.
This verse says that, just like God breathed into the nostrils of Adam, the, uh, a living, and, uh, Adam became a living soul.
Um, devanage kattar, adamakk, varu, uh, aviyay uddhu pragaramaga.
After that also, in every man, God forms the spirit, at what stage, we don't know, but at some stage, God forms the spirit.
Adhur kipirparunku, kattaraagi devan, andha aviyay manushanukulla uddukara, anal, indha edathil narkrumendu, adhu namkutthi ariyadu.
So this God who does these three things is now uttering this prophecy.
Indha devan, indha muddrukarangal, sandhadaan, indha devan, ippribadhaan, oru thirkaadashna thay orakiraa.
Now can you see how God is putting those words, how God is presenting himself?
Indha, kattar, indha vaathigale, ivkara, namkutthi ariyapattirukka, endu padugal.
He starts zooming down from the huge universe, he comes down to the earth, then he comes down to man.
Andha, uh, devanage kattar, andha andha sarasaranam, varu, andha, periyav, edathil, andha, varundhi, bhoomik, andha pirpada, namkullaga, varu, indha vaathigale konduverukiraa.
So he brings the focus closer and closer to the individual.
Andha, andha orumaga, andha, orumagathanmai, varu, nammadiya over, tanipattam, manigundukku, munbaga, varu konduverukka.
So he says, "The God who stretched the universe, the God who made the earth, the God who makes man, is now talking to you, 'I am going to make Jerusalem a cup of trembling.'"
Vaanangali virithu, bhoomi astibara paduthi, manushanudayaavi, avanakkul undakkugara, kattar, indha erusalemay, sagala janangalukum, oru tattalipin pathramaga martukaraa.
Why is God saying that? Why does he start with the universe and the earth and man, and then say, "I'm going to make Jerusalem a cup of trembling?"
En, devanage kattar, vaanangali virithu, bhoomi astibara paduthi, manushanudayaavi, avanakkul undakkii, pinbu, uh, janangalukul, erusalemay, tattalipin pathramaga martuendu solugiraa?
Listen to the answer.
Indha badulai kailigal.
What is going to happen in Jerusalem in a few months is going to affect the spirit of human beings, it's going to affect the planet earth, it's going to affect the heavens, the universe.
Indha manusha, ennim, seller, manigundukku, um, pirpada, manushanukul, narakadaana, andha karim, uh, indha bhoomikselvam, andha bhoomikselvadana, indha karim, andha andha sarasangalukumay selvam?
Adavadu, erusalemil, sikrathil, sambavikke pogadana karimgal, manushanudayaavi, badike pogadu, bhoomiyay badike pogadu, vaanangaliyum badike pogadu. The thing that is going to happen in Jerusalem, it is going to first affect the man's spirit, then it is going to affect the whole earth, and finally, it is going to affect the whole universe.
Vedathil solappattirukkada, ini sambavikke pogadu karimgal nimittam, manushanudaya, irudheyum, soorundupogum, angalathal, heart failure undagum.
Um, in the scripture, it is said, uh, the things that is going to happen, it is going to melt the hearts of men.
Luca 24 adigaram.
Luke's Gospel chapter 21.
26 amasana vasitha.
When we read verse 26.
Vaanathin satthuvangal asekapadum, adelal bhoomiin meel varum avathukaluku bayandhi, edhir pathrakadinaal, manushanudaya, irudheyum soorundupoom.
Man's heart failing them for fear and for looking after those things which are coming on the earth, for the powers of heaven shall be shaken.
Endha muddrukarangale kundu, sagariyav panirindhamadhyar, madalam asanathil, aandavat, tanne arimuga paduthukararo, indha muddrukarangalidya badipe, indha vasanathil vasikiraro.
Just like in the same way, the Lord introduces himself by the three things that he spoke to Zechariah, the same thing he speaks as the fulfillment in this verse.
Manushanudayaavi, undakkenevar, urakkeraa, ippo, inge, manushanudaya, irudheyum soorundupogum.
And he says, uh, he that maker the heart of men says, and now he says, "The heart of men will wax."
Sagariyavil bhoomiin astibaratthi, varu potaar, indha vasanathil, bhoomi, bhoomiil, abath undaga pogadu.
In Zechariah, he says, he laid the foundations of the earth, but now he says, "There are going to be a blessing on this earth."
Sagariyavil vaanangalai virithavat endru vasikiram, indha vasanathil, iv, vaanathinudiyasathuvangal asekapadum endru vasikiram.
In Zechariah, we read, he is the God who stretched forth the heavens, but now he says, uh, heavens is going to shake.
Nammlanegaruk, kairkanavetthirium, 2014, 2015 maandil, isravel desathil, edhu mukkymana karimgal sambavikke pogadu endru, vedha aarachialargal, vaanangali aarachisakiravagal, vedathoodu sambandapputtu, silakarangal narakapogadu endru solugirargal.
We all know, uh, many biblical scholars, they researched all the things that is happening in this earth, and we all know in 2014 and 2015, there are going to happen so many things in, um, in heaven and earth.
Yovell 231 amasana vasikumbodhi.
When we read Joel chapter 231. 231.
Kartarudiyavayangaramana, naal varuvathirukku munbaha.
Before that great and terrible day of the Lord cometh.
Sandiran, sivappai, rattamai marumam.
The moon shall be turned into blood red.
Surian, karuppay marividumam.
The sun shall be turned into dark.
500 varshangalukku munbaha, nanandana sambavam, adhu, 500 varshangalil, muddrum muraitha nanandadu, ippothi 40 muraiyaa, 2014, 15 maandugalil, idhu narakapogadu.
Before 500 years ago, three times it happened, now it is going to happen in 2014 and 15 for the fourth time.
30 murai, adhu, mundana, andha naattu, nanandapodhi, isravel desathil, mukkymana silakarangal sambavittadu.
In the previous happenings, every time this happened, in the land of Israel, some important thing happened.
Agyal, ini, marubidimaa, indha 2 maandugalil, idhu narakkavidinaa?
Because it is going to happen the next time in between these two years.
Sikrima isravel desathil, edhu mukkymana, oru karim narakapogadu.
Soon there is going to be an important event that is going to happen in Israel.
1, adhu, siriyavoodu, oru yuttama irukkalam.
One, it might be a battle against Syria.
Illenra, Iranoodu, oru yuttama irukkalam.
Or it might be a war against Iran.
Illenra, muddram ulagamaha yuttama irukkalam.
Or perhaps it might become a third world war.
Edhuva irundhalu, mukkymaha, edhu 1 narakapogadu.
Whatever it is, something important is going to happen.
Agyal, aandavat solugiraa, manushanudaya, irudheyengal, soorundupogadu.
And that's because the, uh, the Bible says, "The heart of the man will faint."
Andha devan than solugiraa, isravela, erusalemay, ippripattakala thil, tattalipin pathramay martuven.
And that's what the Lord says, "I am going to change the children of Israel as the vessel of trembling."
Agyal, manushanudaya athuma asekapadum, bhoomi asekapadum, vaanangalum asekapadum.
Uh, so the spirit of man will be shaken, the earth will shake, and also the heaven and the whole universe is going to shake.
Anal, adheevida, mukkymana karim.
More important than that is.
Isravel desam, sabai kuri, oru kadigaratthi polu irukkada.
The land of Israel, it is like a clock to the church.
Isravel desam, sabai kuri, nirdalai irukkada.
The land of Israel, it is an example or a shadow to the church.
Isravel desathikai, enna nanand, narakrado, era kurya, adhee kaala thil, sabaiyilum sambavikke.
Whatever happens to the land of Israel, it will happen at the same time to the church.
Agyal, isravela, oru periyav yuttam narakapogadu endra, sabaiyilum, oru periyav yuttam narakapogadu.
So if there is going to be a great battle in the land of Israel, so also there'll be a great battle in the church.
Adheen erathil, isravel janangalukku, kattar, enna vaakkathathu, kodutharo, adhee vaakkathathu, namkum, varu tarukiraa.
At the same time, whatever promises the Lord is giving to the land of Israel, he is going to give the same promises to the church.
Isravelai, naan elladeshathirukum, erusalem, oru tattalipin pathramay martuvan endru sunnala enna?
So what is the meaning when the Lord says, "I am going to change the land of Israel as the vessel of trembling?"
Isravel janangal, oru, oru, madhupana pathraththi pol, martappattirukkara.
The land of, uh, children of Israel have been changed as the cup of wine.
Andha pathrathandha, kudikkira, ellaram, thallada, nadunga aramikke pogradu.
And all those who drink on the cup of wine, they're going to tremble, and they're going to shake.
Avagali tanimiay, agappattu, avagali oduvathirukki, idamillada, naretthil, ellaj, jathigalum, avagali soorundurukkumbo, adhu, kattar, avagali ka, irangapogadu.
When they are isolated. When they are isolated and when they are, there is no way to escape, in all the nations, they surround them, then the Lord shall come down and deliver them.
Anal ippothi edhuthin pragaravana Israel, avarudhi sthanathil illai.
But now the literal Israel, it is not in its position.
Isravel janangal, aandavare, yesuvi ettrukolavilai.
The children of, the people of Israel, they have still not accepted the Lord as their savior.
Oru vidathil moondram ulagamaha yuttathil avargal padukakappatalum.
Though at one aspect, though they might be preserved in the third world war.
Sarira pragarama avarlikko oru kaval kidekku.
No, literally, physically, they are going to get a safety.
Aandavara avudhi vakkutathangalil unmayayurukkabudinaal, sarira pragarama aasiruvadikka avar padukakka avar unmalavil.
Because the Lord is faithful in his promises, literally, he is going to preserve them.
Anal yesuvi avargal vandamanidu thallinabudinaal, sarira pragarama aasiruvadikappatalum, paralogathai avargal thallivittara.
Because they have rejected Jesus as their savior, though they are preserved, literally, they will not be preserved spiritually.
Naamum oru yuttathesandike pogradu.
We are also going to face a battle.
Vanamandallagallin seenegal ellam saviki viruvadum, appendeyakostha janangalik viruvadumay edumbapogradu.
All the powers of the skies and the heavens, it is going to fight against the church.
Eerkannavai ulagathil kunjam kunjamay edumbukkara porattamil, idhe nam pathukondurukkara.
Already we are seeing in this world, little powers there on the rise, it is causing us to struggle.
Anal yippadi Isravel, tansthanathivittupoyirukkaro, naamum namudhiyasthanathivittupoyirukkara.
Now, as the land of Israel has gone out of its position, so also we are gone out of our position.
Adhinnasthanam?
What is that state?
Adh yedhuthin pragaravana sthanam illa.
It is not the literal state.
Devan nammay patthi oru plan vaitthirukkara.
God has kept a plan concerning us.
Namakkor oru owner urukkara.
We have a owner for us.
Namakkutthirindukolladhalin urima irundhalum.
Though we have the right of choice.
Nam andhurima yithavaraai paavithu, aandavarsayavat solvathaisayamal, namudhiyasondasindhanayoodu karudukondurukkara.
We mishandle this right and we try to fulfill our own desires, leaving the will of God.
Idhe dan kadandhasila seethigalil marugutim marugutimaha, vairu vidathil aandar solikondurukkara.
And this is what the Lord is repeating again and again through many sermons.
Devan sindikkirathu pola nam sindikk, sindikkirathu illai.
We do not think like God thinks.
Saul, Saulukku, Saula patthi devan vaitthirukkara sindha enna?
What is the thought or the mind of the Lord concerning Saul?
Nan unni raja vaam maathuvai.
I am going to change you as a king.
Sauludhiyasindha enna?
But what is the mind of Saul?
Yeyo yengapavu diyakadu.
I have lost the assets of my father.
Idhu pola than naamum.
So also we.
Aandavara namme rajaakkalay abhishekampanni, periyay nokkathoodu, avar namu idai pottukundukkara, anal namudhiyaprechnenellam, kalyadhiyaprechna, indhaprechna, andhathaywana, iliwana, ni jebikkeve seyyad, idhela nan pathukoluknida solukkara, andhaprechnekidhan jebitukundeyurukkara.
The Lord has anointed us king for his plan, great plan, but now, we are looking only to the worldly things, God is going, has to fulfill all these worldly things, we are just praying only for those, though he says, do not pray for all this, yet we are still praying for that.
Aagyal, devan indha nokkathoodu namme inge konduvandurukkaro, andhnookkathiniravettakudi dana edathil nam illai.
We are not in the place where the Lord has purpose and he has brought in this place, we are away from that place.
Aagyal, namudhiyasthanathivittu vilagirukkara.
So we are gone astray from our state.
Namudhiyasthanathikku marugutimai vandhal.
If we come back to our state or position.
Pastor Manase sunnara.
As Pastor Manase said.
Poo, rowdy sandapputthukkara.
Imagine, ruffians, they are fighting against each other.
Andh edaththi, rendu police vandhinappodu, ellar odidu.
But at that same place, if two policemen come, immediately they will be scattered.
Appa anga sande nanandha kaarnam, andhpolis andh edathil illai, andhasthanathil illai.
The reason of that strife happening there is, these two policemen were not in their position.
Velipuddithil mudalam adhiyaratthi, mudalam adhiyaratthi.
When we read in Revelation chapter 1.
Andh yedu kutthuvilakukkale patthi vasikiraro.
We read about the seven candlesticks.
25.
Verse 20.
The mystery of the seven stars, which stars first in my right, and the seven golden stick, the seven stars are the angels of the seven churches, and the seven candlesticks which stars first are the seven churches.
Ni kandha yedu kutthuvilakugal, yedu sabegal.
The seven golden candlesticks that you saw are the seven churches.
Ephesus sabayinudhiyavu kutthuvilakku, sorry, Ephesus and Dehse, pattnathundhiyavu kutthuvilakku Ephesus sabay.
The candlestick of the church at Ephesus is the candlestick. Is the church, the, the, the light for the city of Ephesus is the church of Ephesus. The light of the city of Ephesus is the candlestick.
Saint Thomas Mountundhiyavu kutthuvilakku, Saint Thomas Mount sabay.
The candlestick of the Saint Thomas Mount is the church at Saint Thomas Mount.
In the pagal nairathil, in the mooru Saint Thomas Mount, oru andhagarathil moodappattukkaraadu, namukke thiriyadu, thoodaralukku, devanukku thiriyu.
In the broad, this broad daylight, the church at Saint Thomas Mount, it is covered with darkness, but we are not able to see, only the angels can see and God also can see it.
Velil nanandukondurukkara devan, avarli, the janangal, avarli padathu devanayum, nittiyathiyum, maranathikapparputta vaalkayum, yesun geyrundam varugiyum, varappavura nyai tirpeyum, ariyadabudiki, iruttil tadavi nanandukondurukkara.
And the people of this world, they do not understand the purpose of man's creation and God's plan and eternity and all the plans of God, they are walking in darkness, groping in darkness.
Andh irulal devan namme vilakkaha vaitthirukkara.
And amidst that darkness, the Lord has kept as an exception.
Namudhiyasthanathil nam irundhal, in the mount area mooruvadum, yesun velichathenal moodappattukkara.
If we are in a required state, all the mount church will be filled with light.
Jabathenal, intha eyriyave, nam aasiruvadiklaam, control pannala.
Through prayer, we can control this whole area.
Pastor Manase sunnara, inreki Indiaavil, Arasanga talivergal, namukke viruvadumay edumbukkarakka kaarnam, inreki Thiyuravadigal perigutarka kaarnam, yevaryarumalla, naamdan kaarnam nindru sunnara.
As Pastor Manase, Manase said, the reason for all the worldly leaders rising against us and all the terrorists that is rising against us, the reason is none, but it is because we are not in our state.
Desathil oru kolay nanandhal, sabaydan kaarnam.
If there is a murder that is happening in the nation, the reason is us.
Desathil tarkkolaygal perigunal, naamdan kaarnam.
If suicide is on the increase on the nation, the reason is us.
Naam namudhiyasthanathil irundhal, mooru desamum aasiruvadikappadum, padukakappadu.
If we are in the required state or position, the whole nation will be preserved and protected and blessed.
Sthanathivittupona namme marugutimaa sthanathikku kondvarumbidiyadaan, intha varshakadeshil aandav namukke suttiyirupukuttangale thandurukkara.
The Lord has given the sanctification meeting, so that we will go astray from our state, so that we might come back to the required state.
Ezekiel 37.
In Ezekiel chapter 37.
Panirundam vasanathil, undhu 14 vasanathil varakim vasitthal.
When we read from verse 12 to verse 14. See how powerful are these words?
Isravel janangal ippothi kallaraygalil paduthukondurukkara.
Now the children of Israel, they are sleeping in the graves.
Indhakallaraygal enna?
What are those graves?
Adhargal sidharidikapputtadana vevaru naadugal.
And these are the nations that they are scattered.
Aagyal than panirundam vasanathil ippi solirukkaraadu, naan ungalai ungal kallaraygalilindhi yeduppi, ungal sonda desathikke, Isravel desathikke, nam konduruvain.
In verse 11, it says, I will open your graves and cause you to come up out of your graves and bring you into the land of Israel.
Aagyal ippothi sathrukkel enna seythirukkara.
So what are the enemies are doing now?
Isravel janangalai paladeshathil sidharidithu, avarli angia adakkampani vittara.
And they have scattered the children of Israel to different nations and they have buried them in different graves.
Adhey pola avikkuri Isravelarklaa, naam devanudhiyapillagalan, aarikkaappattadana naam, pallam matta avikalal, adimeppadutappatturukkara.
So also we are called the spiritual Israel, we are called by the Lord, we are also buried with so much of these spirits.
Yetthaniyo ovur jaadike, ovur naattukku, pinnadi, yepri sillaa avikalurukkaro, adhupola palajadi pisasigal, nammyaalukey seythukondurukkara.
So like the spirits behind every nation, there are so many spirits that are raining them, so also, we are also rained by so many spirits.
In the mooru boomiyum, sathruvunudhiyavu, satthanudhiyavu paalayamai urukkara.
All the whole earth, it is the camp of the adversary.
In the satthanudhiyavu paalayathidu dam naamukkandukondurukkara.
And we are also seated in this camp of the devil.
Andh satthanudhiyavu paalayathidu dam nam sabay naddathikondurukkara, angadha namudhiyeedugalum urukkara.
And in this camp of the devil, we are conducting this church and also there is houses.
Pisasasummaviduana?
Will the devil leave us like that?
Appa avanudhiyadikaththil urukkara, indhu ulagathil, naam avanudhiyavu paalayathil ujjyam sayumbothu, sabay kudumbodu, naam yepri Thiyuravadigalaparpomoh, adhey pola naam satthanukkatiyuravadigala urukkara.
When we conduct all these church meetings and we pray in this camp, that is under the authority of the Satan, just like we see the terrorists, devil also sees us like the terrorists.
Aagyal, naam ellar avanudhiyulagathil ulavinal, periyam maattham andhulagathil undagam nindru solidhan, namme ellarim shirai padithi vaitthirukkara.
And because we move around his own world and we are going to change his own world, and that's the reason he is causing all this confusion.
Namme shirai paduthuvadu matramala, namme kondru pottu, namme adakkampanna vettum.
Not only captivates us, he kills us and he tries to bury us as well.
Idhedaan avanudhiyavale.
This is his work.
Nam, namme veliyavittal, avanudhiyavu paalayathakalakkarula nammaru.
If we are let loose, then we will become people who shake his whole camp.
Andh oru sambavam sikraman naddakkapogradu.
That event is going to happen very soon.
Inreki India oru sabay urukkaraadu, pakkathu thiruku kariyamalurukkala.
Perhaps today, it might not be known by the next deed that there is a church here.
Sikramay kattar inreki namodu peshanandhvaarthainbadhi, mooru ulagame nam yarandra ariyapogradu.
Very soon, the whole world is going to know that who we are and who this church is.
Inreki era kurya 40 sadavidam janangalikke, yesu vengra pairay ketkamalurukkara.
Today, almost 40 percent of the people, they do not even know the name of Jesus.
Anal oru sillan naattkal, mooru ulagam yesu yarandra ariyapogradu.
But in a very few more days, the whole world is going to know the name of Jesus.
Kattar appadipattor abhishekathay yedupudale anupapogradu.
God is going to send such an anointing, such a revival in our midst.
Anal andh yedupudal naddakkadabudiki.
But so that that revival might not happen.
Andh yedupudan pangali gal avudhi sthanathil irada budiki.
So that we might not be partakers of that revival and so that we might not be in that state.
Pisasas namme yamatri, ippothi vairu edathil kondupoyi, vaira desathil, namme katti pottu vaitthirukkara.
Devil as bounders of taking out, taking us to other state and he has scattered us.
Aagyal, ippadi patta nairathil dan, andh kadeesin naattkal, Erisalem illenral, namme, kattar mooru ulagathil oru tattalipin pathramay maathapogradu.
And for this reason, God is going to change us, the whole church, as the cup of trembling.
Adhuk muntbaha, naam namudhiyasthanathirukku varavendu.
Before that, we should come back to our state.
Adhinnasthanam?
What is that state?
Ungalai patthi, ennai patthi, devan ennathittathavaitthirukkara.
So concerning you and I, what is the purpose of the Lord?
Ennudhiyasondayistham engridhana, andhasthanathandhu, devanudhiyastham engridhasthanathikku varavendu nindral, nan ennath seyyavendu.
So that I might come from my own state, my own will, to the will of God, what should I do?
Andh alosnay peravendu nindral, suttiyirupukuttangalukvaru.
So, so that to get such a council, let us come, come to the sanctification meeting.
Mukkymana sabay, mukkymana kalakattathirukku nam andurukkara.
We have come to the most important days of the church.
Yesu sikraman varapogradu.
Jesus is coming very soon.
Avar varumbodhu, sabayirundukuttathar urukkara.
When he comes, there will be two groups of people in the church.
Yesun varugel, pangidukkara oru group urukkara, yesun varugel, vedikke parkara oru group urukkara.
There will be group of people who will be partakers of his coming and there will be people who are spectators to his coming.
Solomon, eridhina unnada paathu.
In the Psalms of Solomon, written by Solomon.
Nala madhiyaratthi, aramadhiyathirukku varumbodhu.
When we come to the sixth chapter.
Anga, Sulamithiyal engridhana oru streeyay kandukkara.
We read about a woman called Shulamite.
Aval manavatikki, kristvin manavatik oppanavil.
And she is compared to the bride of Christ.
Anga, daramadhiyaratthi, yesunudhiyavu varugail eduttukolapadukkaraadana oru scene, oru, oru padaththi, oru kaatchiay nam parukkara.
We see a scene about, we all gather to the coming of the Lord.
Vilakkodirkken nairam illai, anal panirundam vasanathel vasitthal.
We do not have sufficient time to explain it, but when we read verse 12.
Vasin.
Ninnayazdukkam unne, enaathuma, enni aminadaabin radangalukka opakittu.
Aminadaabin radangal nindru sunnal, vega maay odugradana radangal, enaathuma appri aaitr nindru sunnal, yesundhiyavu varugail eduttukal, vega maay chidirenre, imai poodhal marubappadutugra, anubavathay kandukkara.
When we say the chariot of Amidab, it is very swift, it speaks of when the coming of the Lord is, we will be caught up at a very rapid speed.
Andh Sulamithiyal didiyalindri kanamal poyvidukkara.
This Shulamite, suddenly, she disappears.
Appothi oru kootam janangal, andh kanamal pona, andh manavatthiya parthu, thirumbiva, enna aarikkarara.
But at that instant, some people, they call the Shulamite who has disappeared, saying, come back.
Adhutha vasanam vasin.
Thirumbiva, thirumbiva Sulamithiye.
Poo, idhi solukkaraadu ya.
Who is saying these words?
Ivuludhiyavu close friends, ivuludhiyavu nantraai paraginavargal.
Those are the close friends who had a very good relationship with her.
Sulamithiyal odhu paraginavu friends, anal Sulamithiyal udhi sthanathikku varada vargal.
And when we say the friends of Shulamite, they are those who do not, who have not come to the state of the Shulamite.
Indhetha Sulamithiyal kootathikupoombothu, ivrgalum varuvargal.
To say, in other words, when Shulamite comes to the church, they also would have come.
Nala friends sairpangana, Sulamithiyal suttiyirupukuttupoombothu, ivrgalukke vaira programaruk.
Perhaps they might be friends to Shulamite, they rather than coming to the sanctification meeting, they might have different programs.
Namudhiyuyirukkaa, aandavare poi, pitchay ketkaraadana, andh mukkymana vela ivida, namukke ennath vela priyamana vargal.
What important duty that we have, rather than going to the presence of God and asking and begging to the Lord for our life.
Nan kalpakathal urukkumbothu.
While I was at Kalpakam.
Children's Day nigarchikaha, porutkal vangambudiyaha, kadakepoom.
We went to the shop to buy things for the children's day.
Velikirame, madhyanam, oru manikku oru kadakepoom.
Friday noon, at 1:00 PM, we went to a shop.
Adh oru muslim udhiyavu kadake.
That is a shop of a Muslim.
Appa naangal kettam, sillaporutkal vanga vendum, gift items, enna la urukku.
And we asked the shopkeeper, we need to buy some things, what are gift articles do you have?
Avar enna sunnat thirima?
Do you know what was his reply?
Nan tholugekipoora, moondu manikku vanga.
And said, I am going to, for a worship, you come back at 3:00 PM.
Moondu manikku varuva ma thiruppi, pakkathukadake dana povu.
Will we ever come at 3:00 PM? Rather, we'll go to the next shop.
Anal avudi manasa parungal, avudi business mukkymilla, tholugekipoona, kasa mukkymilla.
And see his mind and his zeal, he had importance to that worship, not his business.
Vinth kadeesikalaathil, unranam meydevanahi, avare nam arindhu, aaradikkaranairathil, avar pesikaranairathil, aarikkaranairathil, andh, andh njaram namukke vendamma.
In these last days, he who is the true and only one God, when he calls us, is the, that should be the importance.
Sutiyirupukuttamilla, ubuvasajabamilla, arikkeilla, kootangillilla, leeta varo, sikramaporo, ujjyakarodathodarubilla, ipdiyay pona, andh Sulamithiyal kanam poombothu, thirumbivaan, aarikkaragroupa mariidu.
When there is no sanctification meeting, no confession, no meetings, we do not come to the meetings at the right time, then we will be like this Shulamite, though we are like this Shulamite, but when the Shulamite disappears, we will be left behind.
Aagyal, naam kattappattan illavathil urukkumbothu, andh kattugalilirundhu, nam aandavare koopadavendamma.
So when we are in this bound state, in such a state, should we not call unto the Lord?
Aandavare evulu periyor vakkutathathu namukke thandurukkara.
How, how great precious promises the Lord has given us.
Marugutimaa Erisalemay, Erisalemay sthanathirukku, nam konduruvain.
He says, I will bring back Jerusalem to the, to the first state.
Ippothi naam ellarum accused, kutrapadutappattan illavathil urukkara.
Now we are all in a state of accusation.
Kattappattan illavathil urukkara.
We are in a bound state.
Anya desangalil adakkampannaappattan illavathil urukkara.
We are in a state, we are buried in a state land.
Aandavara solukkara, ungalai ungal kallaraygalilindhi, nam yedupuyen, marugutimaa Isravel desathikku konduruvain.
The Lord says, I will rise up out of your grace and I will bring back to the land of Israel.
Edhuka konduruvai?
Why is he bringing back?
Adh ularundupona yelumbugalin pallataakke patthi sunnadana vaarthai.
That is the word that is spoken in the valley of the dry bones.
Parungal, ivrgalallam, in the ularundupona yelumbugal, abdi sidharirukkaraadu, yaravargal.
And when we see all these dry bones, it is scattered throughout the valley, who are those? The sun fell upon them and they become so much dry. When the spirit of God called Ezekiel and said to prophesy to this dry bones, saying, "Will this dry bones live?", even he did not have that courage to say, "It will", but he says, "O Lord, thou knowest." However, the Lord said, "You prophesy." What faith, with what faith he would have said, we do not know, but with such a faith, he prophesied. And all these bones, they came together, one to another, and it stood as a skeleton. Why did God give life to all these dry bones which have slain and dead? Is it for, just like in the children's comics, and happily they lived ever after, is it for that? All those who are dead, now we are quickened, you go back to your home joyfully. Let's read verse 10. They stood as a great army. What is the work of the army? Is it for playing cricket? If there is an army, we indeed have a war. Against whom? And we have a battle against those who have slain these people. This is the battle of vengeance, where we need to take against those people who kill these people. Let us close our eyes. And for this reason, the Lord is calling us for the sanctification meeting. And I once again request, by faith, we are going to spread mats so much, so that you all might come. The Lord is desired us to speak towards us, let us come and hear his voice. The Lord is desired so that he might cleanse us and so that he might come back to our state. The Lord is desired so that we were dead and buried and he might lift up as a great army of the Lord. He desires so that he might cleanse us and sanctify, so that we might climb up and trample down the enemy who tried to die to trample us. You yourselves know how great is the struggle over your family. You also try to pray. Even the servants of God have prayed. Nothing has ever happened. That is the dead state. But now, the God is going to pour the spirit through this. God is going to quicken the dead church. We are going to once again become a great army of the Lord. What is our experience today? When we come to the meeting, we have a good anointing. The moment that we leave this camp, there is so much struggle. Immediately after we come to the church, there is anointing. Like this, it is happening, anointing and struggle, anointing and struggle. But God is going to rise up in our midst. No more there is a struggle. All throughout the centuries, that which has happened to us, it is going to happen to the devil now. Let us all close our eyes. Let us hear the words that is read as the key words. Zechariah chapter 12, verse 6. See what is going to happen when Jerusalem is coming back to the state. And see, God is going to turn up Israel as like a torch of fire in a sheep. What is the meaning? And the torch is us. And the chief is all the enemies that is surrounding us. The powers, the powers of sickness that is attacking us frequently. The powers that spines of family players. The powers that supprises husband and wife. The powers of the devil that brings bitterness, so that we might not attend any of prayers. That shows righteousness and honesty in spirit. And all this is going to become like the sheep. By the grace of God, you are going to become that the torch. Now we are going to burn the enemy that is afflicted you hitherto. God is going to change the dry bones as the army of the Lord. But before that, we have to come back to our state. All those who say, "I am going to attend all the five sanctification meetings, though we do not have circumstances to come, but I desire, I have the mind to come, lift up your hands." Only after the mind to come, the Lord will remove all the obstacles. If the enemy has the mind to come, the Lord will open the door. If the enemy has the mind, the Lord will cleanse us. So after lifting your hands, do not give lame excuses. Oh Lord, somehow I should come. Let us pray for fifteen seconds. Oh Lord, somehow I should come to the sanctification meeting and I should return back to my state. I should return to Jerusalem. I am Jerusalem, I should return to Jerusalem. Right on the depths of the heart, let us pray for fifteen seconds. The Lord will hear the ten second prayer. He is going to make us flames of fire. The Lord is going to make a sheep, the enemy that is coming against us. The Lord is going to pin back us to its state. And when the terrorist has a bomb in his body, who can stand surrounding him? When there is a knife in the midst, when the policeman came, who shall stand there? When there is a city that is supposed to die, when the anointer, sancti-caster, pulley comes, who can ever stand there? All those who have a mind to cooperate with God. Now the Lord is having a mind to anoint you. The Lord is having a mind to rise up from your grace. The Lord is mindful, so that he might bring back you to Jerusalem. God is going to change us as the great army of the Lord. I am the Lord that sanctified you. I am going to change your fire. I am going to change your enemy as sheep. I am going to change your enemy that law of sin. I am going to change your blood-stained spirit like the sheep. I am going to change the enemy that affects your body like the sheep. I am going to make the spirit that makes you to speak against like the sheep. I am going to change the spirit of the flesh in this world like the sheep. If the Lord has the mind and anointing is descending. Also, I have a mind to return back to Jerusalem and anointing is descending. If the Lord says, "I will place my spirit above you." Then, that I have spoken, I have spoken, I will fulfill it. The word of the Lord is fire. Let us close our eyes and hear this word being read. Ezekiel chapter 37, verse 14. After we have heard this word. And the word that is in your heart, it will become the fire and other things will become like wood. This word will become wood. God is going to change this word as the wood and he is going to place it in the fire that is your faith. When you hear, now hear it with faith. In the last words, "I am going to return back to Jerusalem." In this last days, he who is the true and only one God, when he calls us, that should be the importance. When there is no sanctification meeting, no confession, no meetings, we do not come to the meetings at the right time, then we will be like this Shulamite, though we are like this Shulamite, but when the Shulamite disappears, we will be left behind. So when we are in this bound state, in such a state, should we not call unto the Lord? How great precious promises the Lord has given us? He says, "I will bring back Jerusalem to the first state." Now we are all in a state of accusation. We are in a bound state. We are in a state, we are buried in a state land. The Lord says, "I will rise up out of your grace and I will bring back to the land of Israel." Why is he bringing back? That is the word that is spoken in the valley of the dry bones. And when we see all these dry bones, it is scattered throughout the valley, who are those? Let's read verse 9. See, these are the children of Israel. How did they die? Did they die in an accident? And this verse says, "They are slain." How did they become dry bones? Because enemy has slain them. In verse 2, it says, "They are dried very much." The meaning is, they have been dead for so many years. The sun fell upon them and they become so much dry. When the spirit of God called Ezekiel and said to prophesy to this dry bones, saying, "Will this dry bones live?", even he did not have that courage to say, "It will", but he says, "O Lord, thou knowest." However, the Lord said, "You prophesy." What faith, with what faith he would have said, we do not know, but with such a faith, he prophesied. And all these bones, they came together, one to another, and it stood as a skeleton. Why did God give life to all these dry bones which have slain and dead? See, these children of Israel. The spirit of God called Ezekiel and said to prophesy to this dry bones, saying, "Will this dry bones live?", even he did not have that courage to say, "It will", but he says, "O Lord, thou knowest." However, the Lord said, "You prophesy." What is the meaning? And the torch is us. And the chief is all the enemies that is surrounding us. The powers, the powers of sickness that is attacking us frequently. The powers that spines of family players. The powers that supprises husband and wife. The powers of the devil that brings bitterness, so that we might not attend any of prayers. That shows righteousness and honesty in spirit. And all this is going to become like the sheep. By the grace of God, you are going to become that the torch. Now we are going to burn the enemy that is afflicted you hitherto. God is going to change the dry bones as the army of the Lord. But before that, we have to come back to our state. All those who say, "I am going to attend all the five sanctification meetings, though we do not have circumstances to come, but I desire, I have the mind to come, lift up your hands." Only after the mind to come, the Lord will remove all the obstacles. If the enemy has the mind to come, the Lord will open the door. If the enemy has the mind, the Lord will cleanse us. So after lifting your hands, do not give lame excuses. Oh Lord, somehow I should come. Let us pray for fifteen seconds. Oh Lord, somehow I should come to the sanctification meeting and I should return back to my state. I should return to Jerusalem. I am Jerusalem, I should return to Jerusalem. Right on the depths of the heart, let us pray for fifteen seconds. The Lord will hear the ten second prayer. He is going to make us flames of fire. The Lord is going to make a sheep, the enemy that is coming against us. The Lord is going to pin back us to its state. And when the terrorist has a bomb in his body, who can stand surrounding him? When there is a knife in the midst, when the policeman came, who shall stand there? When there is a city that is supposed to die, when the anointer, sancti-caster, pulley comes, who can ever stand there? All those who have a mind to cooperate with God. Now the Lord is having a mind to anoint you. The Lord is having a mind to rise up from your grace. The Lord is mindful, so that he might bring back you to Jerusalem.
katturi samugutukai nam katturi stotri pum stotram 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 kattanamukuthandurukira nambekei kaay katturi stotri pum stotram 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 kattar peesana vaathegal kaay katturi stotri pum stotram 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 todandhanadakapugaruvu yangale kattaraasirudikimidiya stotri pum stotram 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 ellathudigana mahimai katturke sritika katturi stotri pum stotram 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 Alleluia nee haandu rey ngodugunna naalakala adhyamai eda bhattu varigiri yekadisi kalam arukkavidi naa yengalay jeeviyengalay uvaru kutthiriyani raitha prithikundey irikiri swami naalakala haandu rey naalakala thirumbum naalakala yengalay sthalathukku engalay niruthi vekkara devana irikiri adhakaas stotram haandu rey unmyaguyin dabu vaanangalkil or asavi undha haandu rey buhmi la haandu rey swami aavut neeridam endum yengalay irudhiyin soondupu irukkara inbadhiyin tittavatamaay naalakala arindugala kirkvandhi naalabidi naal ippadi patta vannilavathla irukkum odu yengalay jeeviyengalay undugu da haandu rey ni veeepikara devanaay maritha anuvut thiru haandu rey kallari poole yengalay irudhiyin kaanappattade yengalay jeeviyam or kallari poole maritha anuvutla kaanappattade ellaa vallemi lirundu yengalay haandu rey ni veeepikara devanaay irikiri yengalay yedupi haandu rey or periyi seene yaay maatikara devanaay irikiri raadakaan andu orudhudikro haandu rey ellaa arundukuttukandu daan uvarum haandu rey kattodi appas haandu rey saapa kudarathla irukkara uvaru haandu rey ni veeepita badi naa stotram uvaru dey jeeviyengali haandu rey mahapraye seene yaay yengalay jeeviyengali maati haandu rey naalakala ellaa yengalay varappara ellaa yuddangaliyum haandu rey swami naalakala haavatte merkullakuthana or abishayi or aaviyay yengalay tandirikiri raadakaas stotrikro haandu rey ibbadi padhaan haanuvangalay naalapethikundu maatharamla ininaadakrana ellasutthirivukuttangalakka naalakadandu ondi yengalay jeeviyengalay muttilumaay arainde pathi nalha haandu rey swami or jeevitrala ellaa haandu rey kallari poondakkaana haanuvangalay naalamati yengalay jeeviyengalay undugu da veeepikappada nalharo sugande vasane visappada kattala variki naalakala ayathamaga kattarangal uvaru tarudipattumidiyaay vaidikaram indha eva ayarakmaay indha vasatjin kadisi vodila kodutha indhasutthirivukuttangala vandu uvaru dey jeeviyengaliyay haandu rey naalakala katpadiyals kattudi samuthu mubaga lusingasal mubaga tarudigularai maatikula kattakirvadarumidiyaay vaidikrom taalthiroom haandu rey yengalay girve yengalay abishayam yengalay poldu nirey voduguna naalakala kaanappadanga kudai seyyam eswinaamate kakekrom pidavi
may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ the love of God the Father and the sweet fellowship of the Holy Spirit rest and abide with us now until Jesus returns in glory Alleluia Alleluia Alleluia